It is six oh one on Tuesday, August twenty seventh. We will call this Hermosa Town Board Special and Budget Meeting to order. Roll call Kramer, I'm here Ferguson.
Here.
Gunt.
Here.
And Harris is absent with the flu. Hello there, welcome.
I've never been to one of these.
The budget meeting.
They're pretty boring.
Well, you'll hear now, so let's go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance tonight. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. I need a motion to accept the agenda as written.
I make that motion.
Okay, motion's been made.
Seconded.
Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, board. Um, new business. Um, we have the two thousand and twenty-five budget discussion, but we have company tonight. Thank you for joining us for explanations. Um, Terry, if you would introduce and...
So this is Alexander and he's the one with Waterworth, that software that we have. And he just knows the program so much better than I do. And he offered to
Awesome.
Do a presentation for you guys, so if you have questions, you can ask him and he'll be more readily to answer them than I ever could, so.
Thank you very much for joining us, we appreciate it.
I'm happy to be here, thank you for having me. Um, yeah, so I've been working with Terry for past maybe three months now, just on building some financial forecasts of both the water and sewer fund um, for the town of Hermosa here. We've got a couple of different things to talk on. Um, we've got a number of different cash pro forma statements, um, and some forecasts to, uh, to take a look at here. Um, I've also been working on this with Mr. Anthony Theodoro, if y'all are familiar with him.
Absolutely.
So we've, we've got, uh, we've got some capital improvement plans in there and some, some, uh, funding scenarios. Everything we're just gonna talk on today, I'll keep it brief. Um, gonna go over what Waterworth looks like, how we do all of our analysis, and then what kind of action plan Terry and I uh, have kind of outlined and what needs to happen within the next couple of years to make sure that the, uh, water and wastewater funds are, are bringing in enough money to, to recover their costs out to the future here.
Okay.
Awesome. So, let me start sharing my screen here. Y'all can see that okay?
Yes.
Beautiful, okay. So right here, what we have in front of us is the water funds, uh, fifteen year cash pro forma, or financial forecast as we call it. All that's going on in here is a couple of years of actuals from, uh, from the town. Uh, those have been compiled in here and those are projected out, uh, fifteen years. I'll go over what those are in a little bit more detail shortly. Um, but the first thing I want to point out here is this dashboard graph that we have in front of us. And this is essentially what Waterworth is great at. Um, is, is turning all that, that math that's going on in the finances that Terry's working on. Uh, it turns it into this big beautiful chart. This chart is very simple, there's only four things going on in here. There is money out, so there is some expenses. There's money in, so there's some revenues. There is cash and there are some guidelines that Terry and I have talked about. And I'll go through each of those, uh, in more detail now. So, to start off, we have some operating expenses and those are taken from a couple of years worth of actuals from two thousand and twenty-one through two thousand and twenty-three. And then those are projected out at three percent inflation out into the future here. We have as well some current debt service, as well as some proposed debt service, uh, from some borrowing scenarios that Terry and, uh, Anthony have discussed. As well, we have some pretty big capital improvements. Uh, and so that details essentially our, our revenue requirements, what we need to be funding, uh, within the waters, on the water side here. And that builds this kind of mountainous background, I'm not sure there's too many mountains over there in South Dakota. Um, this builds a kind of mountainous horizon for our revenue requirements. In front of that, we have our revenues. So again, sale of water service here, again, a couple of actuals from twenty-one through twenty-three, and then those are projected out. Um, there's no inflation on that because these are affected by our rates, and I'll get into that in a little bit more detail shortly. On top of that, we just have some other operating revenues, some developer contributions, some non-operating revenue, as well as some big borrowed funds, again, from discussions that Terry and Anthony have had internally. And those detail, a kind of city skyline, I like to look at it like some skyscrapers that tell us how much money we're bringing into the fund year over year. And if we lay those on top of each other, we get this beautiful picture that we look at and we say where our cities are towering over the mountains, our revenues are exceeding our revenue requirements. So we're bringing money into the fund. And where those mountains are towering over our cities, we are losing money in the fund because our revenue requirements, or our expenses rather, are exceeding our revenues. All of that factors in to give us a cash position. Again, a couple of years of actuals, we have two thousand and twenty-one through two thousand and twenty-three's opening cash balance. And then Waterworth just, just does the math based on the expenses and revenues to give us a cash, uh, position for the water fund out into the future, uh, for the next fifteen years here. We also have a couple of guidelines here, uh, this red one you can see here is an operating threshold. We have that, uh, set at thirty-three percent of one year's worth of working capital, that is to say, um, four months, sorry, three months, um, worth of operating expenses. So if everything went sideways and you were bringing in no money into the fund, you'd be able to fund the operating expenses, uh, for the fund for three months, as well as a hundred percent of one year's worth of debt. So everything goes sideways, no money's coming into the fund, you'd be able to cover three months of operating and that year's entire worth of debt, which is good to hear from, uh, any lenders. Uh, and on top of that, we have, have this black line here, which is just an extra hundred thousand dollars, we call the rainy day fund. Except the rain isn't coming from the sky, it's coming from the ground because we've had something like a water main break and we need a little bit of extra cash to cover our butts and make sure that we can cover any emergencies. And the idea with these guidelines is to make sure that the cash position is somewhere in the middle, trailing closer to the black line rather than the red line. That's the idea there.
Okay.
All of that culminates into this beautiful picture of the water fund as a kind of cash pro forma over the next fifteen years. Does that all sound good, well and good, everyone's following along?
Yep, it just doesn't look good.
Yeah, yeah, there's, uh, there's some action that has to be taken within the next couple of years here, Terry and I have. A couple of different things, uh, a couple of different discussion points that we think, uh, that Terry thinks would be, would be sound, um, to go over within the organization. I'll jump over the numbers fairly briefly, just wanna give a, a bit of an overview of them for the nerds in the room who like numbers. Um, but first off, we have our operating expenses, these are again taken from some actuals. So we have three years worth of actuals and then projected out at three percent inflation year over year. So personnel services, other current expense materials and other. We also have some capital expenses, so we have capital assets from, uh, twenty-two, twenty-one to twenty-three. And then we have some, excuse me, some fire flow improvements and a water treatment well number two for two point two million dollars coming up next year, that needs funding. Following from that, we have our revenues, again, charges for goods and services is the big one. Uh, that's where all of the money is coming from, the sale of water service and again, projecting out uh, from fifteen years with a couple of years worth of actuals as well as current year's budget. And then the rest of the revenues are in there as well as some grants. We also have some debt. Uh, there's some current debt in here as well as some proposed debt that Terry and Anthony have worked on, uh, more closely. I'm not the best person to speak on this, this would be Terry and Anthony's purview more closely. Uh, but the main thing to look at here is this state revolving fund loan um, for the well project for two point two million coming up in two thousand and twenty-five here. Paid out debt service over thirty years at one point six five percent. And that's all the numbers really are telling us. Um, all of that math comes together to give us this cash pro forma um, and tell us what the behavior of the fund is going to be if we took no action in the next couple of years. And that's exactly what I'm showing you here, what we call this is the, the status quo scenario, um, where no action is being taken, we're just kind of letting the beast take hold, letting, letting, letting the machine do its thing, um, and seeing where the cash position goes. And as you can see, we're taking a bit of a dive come two thousand and twenty-nine to two thousand and thirty, and we have to address that. Does that all sound well and good?
Yes, no, I, but I have a question that I don't know what they answer to pretty much, but you have not added in an increase to the, uh, water and sewer, uh, bills yet, correct?
Uh, nothing, nothing proposed, no proposed increases are in this scenario.
Okay, yep, very good.
Awesome.
Yeah, and that, that increase is increase in rates and also in number of users.
Correct.
As well, just to be clear.
Correct. Yep, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
One hundred percent, yeah, my pleasure. Okay, so jumping from this status quo scenario where we're saying that there is no action being taken within the fund, we come to what, uh, Terry and I have discussed to be what we think is the, the best, uh, course of action um, through a quick discussion here. The scenario is called our ten percent for two years and three percent thereafter. And all that's going on in this scenario is we are increasing the rates by ten percent in two thousand and twenty-five and ten percent in two thousand and twenty-six, so January first of those years, as well as three percent in the years following, um, to maintain the cash position between the two targeted lines here and keep us from, uh, from falling into the red there. That does include the, uh, additions to, um, the, the additional users to the system, uh, because I understand there's a supreme amount of development happening in the town. Uh, so that's all plugged in here. Uh, but with that ten percent for two years and then three percent thereafter, this gets us into a good position, um, follow in, into the following years where we wouldn't have to do any crazy increases, uh, or rate adjustments rather. Um, essentially, the idea with this is to get ahead of the eight ball now rather than delaying it, um, until sometime when the cash is really hitting the, hitting the zero, um, and then, and then taking a, a supreme amount of rating adjustments on, uh, in a single go.
Okay, how many, um, new users do you have booked into this then?
So I believe Terry, we had mentioned it was five percent increases, uh, to the water and, to the water and wastewater systems year over year for, for two years?
Well, that's what we were projecting, just, that was a conservative, I mean, I'm not sure with, I was looking at the plat for Preston's and, is there like fifty-some lots up there? I didn't realize there was that many, so, so I was kind of estimating low, but I'm not sure how, how quickly that's all gonna get developed and they're gonna get new users, so.
But you have it at five percent growth.
Five percent growth.
In two thousand and twenty-five and in two thousand and twenty-six. And then what do you have in twenty-seven on up?
So, before I answer that, I'm, I'm curious, cause Terry, you mentioned this earlier, that there was some sort of lawsuit with the developers that, um, was making it such that the, the, uh, new users couldn't be put on the water system. Could you help me understand that a little bit better?
Well, I wasn't here, but that's my limit, I guess I better.
Um, so yes, Southern Hills Water. The court ruled in case in, for them in supplying their water. And so those forty-seven lots or whatever will go to them if they have the abilities to serve them. Right now, they do not have the ability to serve them and a guesstimate at this point would be they would not have the ability to serve them for approximately two years, no?
Okay, I don't know, shaking my head.
Approximately two years. And, and we think there's a possibility that the development will start before they can serve their water. So we believe that Southern Hills is going to have to make a deal with us to serve their water for at least a certain amount of time and then with the pipes already in the ground and us doing it, I'm guessing they will just, um, charge us a X amount of dollars to serve that development rather than to serve it themselves. That's a guess, I understand that, but.
Yep, that makes sense.
Okay, um, we have another word to be said here?
Absolutely.
Uh, I just wanted to clarify, um, with the rain increases over the first two years. Did, you said that was ten percent per year?
Correct, just ten percent in two thousand and twenty-five and ten percent in two thousand and twenty-six.
Okay.
So that is, as I recall, um, just to let you know here, when we first went for this loan, which was several years ago, uh, we'd been holding it for a long time, waiting to make decisions. Um, I was thinking that the rate increase would be, I'm, I'm guessing here, but it was somewhere I thought around thirty dollars per customer to pay that bill on that loan. And so, um, I'm, I'm guessing that the increase in users has really dropped that down then. Cause you're talking a rate increase of only twenty percent in the next couple of years. And, and then it, it takes another three years, four years to come up with what I thought it was. So, I, I mean, I like that, I like that doing it slower rather than one big hunk, I think that's wonderful, but.
Yep, that's, that's a great point. Um, there's a bit of a disconnect in, um, what the model understands as to what the, what, what is meant by a, a ten percent increase in two years. Um, what we're, what we're doing with this is when I showed the revenues table here, um, all we're doing is adjusting the billed revenue by X percent year over year. So we can see that the budget amount for two thousand and twenty-four was a hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars. If we increase that by ten percent, which is what Waterworth is doing, we're gonna bring in two hundred and five thousand seven hundred dollars. And then increase that again by ten percent to bring in two hundred twenty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars. And so it's not the same as saying, um, or it's not, rather, it's not understanding it as a X dollar increase per bill for each user. Whatever the, the billing structure is for the town, I'm not familiar with that, Terry, and I briefly discussed that earlier. Uh, but that was not the, the, the main topic of discussion. This is more so looking at a ten percent increase in billed revenue and thus translates to a ten percent increase across all bills. So whatever the base rate and variable rate would be, those should increase by ten percent to make this, uh, amount of billed revenue. Does that kind of answer that question? I think that, that should clarify that point in my mind.
Yeah, it, it did, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, basically, if you, if we assumed the current number of users and then, and we assume that didn't change, then you could calculate based on those numbers, uh, what the dollar amount per user would be. And that would be the absolute worst case scenario, right? So then that would be that amount divided by twelve, divided by the number of users. And then that would be the amount that they pay each month. And then you compare that to what they're paying now to get the difference, right? Uh, but this is, I mean, and basically, it, it's almost implied that the number of users doesn't change. But not really, because it, it's good that he doesn't have the number of users built in there, cause we don't really know what that's gonna be. We just know it's gonna be more than what we have now.
Right.
Which means that the actual dollar amounts that people are gonna pay are likely going to, uh, decrease over time. And then they'll level out once that levels out. You think that's a, a fair thing to say, Alexander?
I, I agree, yes, and I, I don't, Terry and I mentioned this earlier, I don't currently have a, a population growth built into this. Um, but what we could say is if we had X number of extra users, if that was understood as a percent over the town's population, we could add that to the model and consider that essentially as a percent rate increase, because that additional consumption would be viewed the same way in terms of billed revenue as an aggregate. Um, and so we could definitely look at, um, that and with that in mind, if we were to add those users to the organization or to the system rather, um, then most definitely, um, the total bill paid by each customer would be lower because the billed revenue across the system would be the same with those new users involved. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, then I, I totally agree, one hundred percent. Yeah, and so with this, with this model, we've said that the kind of ten percent for two years, Terry and I understand that that's, that's the, that's the kind of, um, get ahead of the eight ball quickly scenario, um, rather than go in and, and shock the users, uh, a couple of years down the road when we're really strapped for cash. As well, it keeps our cash position above that kind of red line, that, that operating threshold whereby if anything did happen in the system that we needed to address in an emergency situation, um, we'd have some cash on hand to address that and wouldn't be, you know, hurting or, or flooding any streets or anything like that.
Okay.
And so with that in mind, um, I hope this is, this is resonating with, with all of y'all and, and this makes sense. Um, Terry and I very briefly talked about what it would look like if we had, um, kind of staved off, we, we understand that we have some cash in the bank right now, we wanna stave off, um, any rate increases for now, we'll do it a couple of years down the road. I just quickly created this cost of inaction scenario where we can see that the cash position behaves very similarly. It takes a bit of a dip, um, come twenty-eight and twenty-nine, but then we adjust the rates there, um, to kind of bring that cash back into, back into focus, um, as we need it there. But what that requires, if I jump in here, is a sixty percent increase.
Yeah, everybody being moving out of town.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So I hope that illustrates the cost of inaction in this, in this instance.
Uh-huh.
And hopefully, hopefully drives home the, the need to, um, get those rate increases, um, earlier rather than later, sooner rather than later, um, to make sure that we're funding, funding for this capital and this, this increase in debt service over the next couple of years here.
Yeah, it definitely shows that.
Good, I'm glad to hear it. Are there any questions on the water side? That's all I had to cover there.
Anybody? No, we're all good.
Beautiful, okay. Following from that, we come to the wastewater system. And again, we have our status quo model. Once again, I'll just build this up from the ground up. We have our operating expenses with a couple of years of actuals, again, projected at three percent. Some current debt service and some proposed debt service, as well as some big capital improvements here in the next couple of years.
Yeah.
In front of that, we have our sale of sewer service, some other operating revenue, developer contributions, non-operating revenue and borrowed funds. And all of that culminates together in our status quo model to tell us what our cash is going to behave like over the next couple of years. It's quite a different picture, uh, because there's a significant amount more cash hanging out in the wastewater fund. But with that, um, big project coming down the pike this year or next, um, and the loan that we're taking out to cover that project, the debt service is quite an encumbrance for the sewer fund. Now, before I go into this in any more detail, I wanna understand this better. How much in the past and currently has the water fund been subsidizing the wastewater fund in terms of revenue?
That would be like a transfer in, I'm sure.
I don't know, I don't know, we'll have to, uh, investigate on that.
Okay, the only reason I ask that is currently what I have pictured here is that they're entirely separate enterprise funds with no, um, interaction whatsoever, no inter-fund transfers, nothing like that. Um, and I wanted to make sure that I investigate this a little bit further before I propose what Terry and I have, um, discussed over the past couple of weeks here with respect to rate increases. Um, because they're, they're aggressive, but they're necessary.
Yeah, I mean, looking at the two thousand and twenty-four budget, there was a, a transfer in budgeted for water about five thousand fifty-seven hundred dollars. And in the sewer fund, there was a residual transfer in of like thirty-two hundred dollars, not a huge amount.
Thirty-two hundred dollars?
Yeah, not a huge amount, but.
Not a huge amount, that's, that's okay. That, that won't make too much of a difference in terms of this picture here then. Um, for the sake of this discussion, we can leave that out. I was just curious, I wanted to make sure that there was nothing significant, um, with respect to that. Uh, cause otherwise I, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be too trusting of this model. But now I know that this is all calibrated and, and, and ready to go. Um, so I'll just dive into the numbers very briefly here for the nerds in the room like myself. Again, we got a couple of years operating expenses, some personnel services, other current expense materials and other. Once again, projected out fifteen years with three percent inflation. We got some capital expenses, we have this wastewater treatment plant and this lagoon expansion for a total of one point five million coming up, uh, this year or next. And then we have a supreme amount of debt financing happening, uh, this year and next, um, that Apple Springs, uh, is involved with. Once again, this is a discussion more pertinent to, or more in the purview of Terry and Anthony, so I won't speak on this too, too much. Uh, but it's here for your viewership. And then of course, we have our revenues, which is mainly geared towards this charges of for goods and services as the sale of water service there. And with all of that in mind, we have again our cash position as we see it, um, into the future here. So in two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five, we take out that big, that big amount of, uh, debt service. Um, that is of course paid out through, uh, paid, paid for, uh, paying for rather the, uh, lagoon expansion of wastewater treatment plant. Um, and then over time, the decline in cash position is due to that increased debt service that we can see against our operating revenues. If I just isolate our operating expenses, current and proposed debt against our sale of sewer service here, we can see there's quite a deficit that needs to be made up with some rates here. As well, we wanna keep in mind, um, that when we're going to these lenders for these loans, we wanna be able to illustrate that we are bringing in enough money to pay for this debt service over the next couple of years. Um, we don't want them to, to look at our financials and say that we don't have enough money to pay off the debt and then not give us the, uh, the loan, um, before we, when we start the project, right?
Yep, correct.
Exactly. Okay, so that is our status quo, that illustrates what's going on, our kind of do nothing scenario. Let me jump into our first discussion point, um, for rate increases here. So firstly, I'll just isolate the cash position here, so there's a number of things going on here, but this is just the first look at what's going on with the cash position and we can see that with some action over the next couple of years, we're able to bring this cash position out of the red and into a, a pretty good position, a pretty good spot between our operating threshold and our cash position target there. And what that looks like is pretty substantial, but Terry and I agree that this is gonna be necessary. Um, the first increase is ten percent in two thousand and twenty-five just to kick us up, um, kick us into gear and, and get us going on some rate increases. And this is immediately followed by six consecutive annual nine percent increases from two thousand and twenty-six till two thousand and thirty-one. And that is then followed by five percent increases year over year out into the future there. I'll let that digest for a moment.
Take me again through thirty-one through thirty-six, what was that?
Thirty-one through thirty-two.
Five percent, five percent.
Yes, yes, five percent from twenty thirty-two on first.
Yep, yep, okay.
And again, this is taking into account the increase in users on the system. Terry and I discussed that five percent in growth in two thousand and twenty-five and five percent growth in two thousand and twenty-six uh, is a conservative estimate for the additional users on the system, um, that will be purchasing sewer services. So that increase to the revenue is also taken into account here. So what are our thoughts on a kind of rate schedule that looks out to the, for the next ten or so years, um, such as this? A ten percent in two thousand and twenty-five, followed by six nine percent annual increases?
Well, I, I, you know, when I look at my pocketbook, I say, darn, I don't have enough money to go on vacation now. However, when I'm, sorry, but when I'm looking at it as, as a town perspective, we, we knew, we knew we were gonna have to increase. And like I said, I think our increase, um, was gonna be, uh, when we, when we signed the loan, um, and I think it was gonna be, um, probably thirty percent, twenty-five percent, um, across the board, so, and then when you're talking this, it's.
So what kind of dollar amount are we talking?
Well, I would say a dollar amount per homeowner would be, we'll just say in two thousand and twenty-six, it's gonna be twenty-three dollars.
Per homeowner.
Per homeowner, I'm, I'm guessing. And I, and when I say that, I'm talking, um, hopefully that's water and sewer together.
Yes, they're both ten percent a year.
So with that in mind, we were to combine the two, um, which I can do here shortly. Um, that might not be the same story as a, it, it would be a ten percent on the water side and a ten percent, uh, on the sewer side. Um, again, I'm not entirely sure how the billing structure is currently set out, uh, or the rate structure, excuse me, is set out for the town of Hermosa.
Right.
Um, but I can't, I can't speak on that in a dollar amount, though, i- if I were told, I'd be happy to, to calculate that in, in a jiffy.
Okay. Do you want that?
What's that?
Do you want him to calculate that out, or are you all right?
What was he gonna calculate out again?
I'm sure it was gonna be.
Approximate increase.
For per homeowner.
Oh, yeah, I mean, yeah, if he could do that quickly, that'd be nice to see.
Did you hear that?
I did, yeah. If I could, uh, have the, like, what's, what's a current bill look like typically?
With water, sewer, it's usually like ninety-nine, seventy-four.
Well, so let's just say it's close to a hundred dollars, uh, but that includes a twenty dollar, um, garbage fee.
Oh, shoot. I mean, he's gonna end.
End in ten minutes, so we gotta.
Ten minutes, Anthony, or, wait, Alexander.
No problem.
We're on the free version, so.
No problem, no problem. No problem, no problem. Um.
As you can see, we need to save money.
I hear you. I hear you. Okay, so let's just say it's eighty dollars per user on water and sewer. Um so would that be forty dollars for water and forty dollars for sewer, give or take?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So we are posing on the wastewater side those amounts. And on the water side, we want these amounts.
Just amazes me that.
How fast you can do that. That's what I was thinking the same thing.
You uh one plus that forty times one plus the percent, the percentage.
Yeah, it's it's just being a little funky in terms of the formatting, because I copied it from the tool.
Right.
So it uh.
There you go. We gotta convert that to dollars. There you go. Yep.
So that would look like a total of those bills year over year for each user with those increases in place.
And that that also doesn't assume that we're getting any more users either.
Well, yeah, I understand that. And that's why I said that I don't think that's bad. Um I a- as far as.
This is worst-case scenario.
Worst-case scenario, yeah, so.
So this, I'm sorry, this doesn't include new users, right?
No, this is not the new users.
This is just worst-case scenario. So new users, everything's gonna.
Yep.
Yeah.
It'd be less of an impact.
And really, he he only has on the ones where he includes growth, five percent in a couple of different years. And if we assume four hundred people, what five percent is? I mean, half of forty, that's only that's twenty new people in those two years only. And we know that that's probably gonna probably a pretty low estimate.
We're getting more than massive kids in the elementary school. I mean, we got like thirty new students.
Right. Well, and they're coming from from everywhere, but basically those would have to be people moving into town, into new houses. And then adding, so maybe that's not that, maybe that is a pretty good estimate then.
I think that's a good estimate for a couple of years. I think that a couple of years after that, it will.
It's gonna explode.
It's gonna explode. That's what I think.
So I I really think this this is uh, I mean, basically, we're seeing worst-case scenario here. And to me, it's palatable, you know, and and um I mean, we gotta do it anyways.
Yeah, we have to do it. We have to make an increase, so.
But when you see the percentages, they look scary, but then when you see what the actual amount is, it's not as scary. I mean, so it's, you know, and it it that's gonna be different for everybody, but.
Right, the first year, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and then, I mean, that after that, we'll probably have some new users, so you're gonna, you know.
Hey, Alexander, are you able to export like these slides into a PowerPoint that you could email to me?
One hundred percent, sir. Absolutely.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh does Terry have your email?
Yes.
Terry has my email, yes. And I'm happy to answer any questions if y'all have any questions uh after this. Um feel free to reach out, phone or email. Um one thing I do want to add, and I'm gonna say this is a this is a talking point here, is that um this kind of rate schedule that we're building out right now is kind of a one-time idea. Um but if we were to go ahead with, say, this first ten percent increase, um we'll, of course, want to revisit this, and this is the the fantastic thing about the relationship that Terry and I will have over the next few um months to years here, is we're we're hoping to continuously and constantly revisit this discussion and say, okay, it's been a month. What kind of revenue are we pulling in? How many new users are we adding to the system? What does this revenue actually look like? And do we need to be more aggressive, or can we ease off the gas pedal with respect to these rate increases as time goes on? This is just a kind of one-time snapshot as to what the fund should look like over the next couple of years. But as this discussion develops, as that development comes into the town, we're gonna keep having these discussions and 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 revisit this. Um hopefully every every two to three months or so, um and make sure that we're staying on track to keeping the town uh making sure that the wastewater and the water funds are recovering their costs. Um so it's by no means something that has to be like adopted and put into ordinance today. This is this is a very dynamic and and fluid discussion that we're gonna be having um for for months and hopefully years to come.
Yep, sounds good.
Awesome. Great to hear. So that that's everything I had to show. I hope that that's all been absorbed and and well-received there. Um and I understand that I'm on a bit of a timer here. Um are there any burning pressing questions for me?
Anybody?
Okay.
Yeah, what do you think?
It sounds like everybody's good. I just wanna say that um.
This is roughing in, right?
Your your ability with the computer and to explain it all to us is um absolutely wonderful, and I'm really glad you're a nerd.
By you pushing the buttons, not me.
I I can sense at least a little bit of a computer science background.
Yeah.
Awesome. Okay, well, Terry, you have my email and my phone number. By all means, reach out if you have any questions or if we'd like to discuss this at all further. I'm happy to chat. Um feel free to put some time in my calendar. We can sit down much just like this over Zoom.
Sure.
Um and we could discuss this further at any time.
Well, thank you for this presentation. I think it really helps, so.
My my pleasure. My pleasure. It's great. Now, I thank y'all for having me. I'm really looking forward.
Yep.
Thanks, Andrew. You have a great night.
You as well. Bye now.
Bye.
Cal, you ever use Discord?
No.
No? It's like ten times better than Zoom and free.
Yeah.
What is it?
Discord.
Talk to.
Communication.
Yeah, we I've never.
It was built by gamers, which means that it's better than.
Yes, of course it is.
And it's free.
And it's free.
You can share documents through it too. You can, it's all in one.
D I S C O R D?
Yeah, yeah, Discord, yep.
And and I presume since how it was gamers too, that it's a very safe?
Very safe, very efficient, very secure. You can set up your own server. That might actually be the best option for, no, I need a live screen being too.
Yeah, the thing about that is is you have to, obviously, everybody's gotta be on the same platform.
That's the tough part is, yeah. But if you got guys like I'm sure he's got Discord.
Think he's got Discord?
Yeah, he's.
So now we'll have to ask people if they have Discord.
Yeah, I mean, the thing, the other, real quick, I'm like, it might be, well, actually, yeah. So I'm gonna be talking on Thursday with somebody from I think it's Hewlett Packard, and they they have like a a side company that makes hardware for Zoom meetings. That you just put the hardware up in the room and then it'll capture everything. Yeah, like this standalone deal. And I mean, I think it will require I mean, it's standalone as far as it's basically like a soundbar with a camera built into it. And then uh I think you could do remote microphones too. This is all things I'm gonna have to ask him.
Okay.
But I think it's gonna be pretty spendy, and so I just wanna get a kind of a baseline estimate of how much the fancy stuff is, and then we can work backwards. Maybe me and him could work together and figure out how to engineer something that's way cheaper and just and will work just as good. If you're interested in doing something like that, and um and we can kind of figure out how that system will work. Uh how it could work with Zoom or Teams or Discord, you know, we can build all that functionality into it too, but but who's to say? I mean, if it's only like a couple, three grand for this thing, and it's good enough for now, that may be palatable. I don't know. I mean, but just it'll give us a a starting point anyways.
Okay, thank you. And thank you. And let us know what happens.
Anything to make this stuff easier.
Yeah, right. Exactly. Yes, absolutely. We all live, most of us live here. And we don't want our bills to go any higher than we have to, you know, any of us. I don't, you know, all the citizens, if, you know, I don't want it either. So it's just what we have to do. And thank you. That was great.
Yeah, but he's just so knowledgeable.
He works with Antfor.
Well, he's with Waterworth, so that's a computer program, that software that we bought for five thousand dollars, and it's like we I just figured we might as well get our money's worth out of it. Yeah, he's.
You're right.
It seems like a pretty small team, right?
Yes, yes.
That's that's what you want from software. You want the guy that actually.
Yeah, I talk to him every time I talk to him.
Yeah, and you know what? I mean, once we get this all kind of fleshed out, um I mean, it may even be good. It'd probably have to be a video or something, but we could make like a eight-minute video or something that we show on there to the public.
To the public.
When we're talking about, okay, what are the increases? These are the percentages. These are the worst-case scenario, actual dollar amount increases, assuming that we don't get any new users, which we know that's not gonna happen. So you know, but you know, and give people an idea of what we're talking about, because, you know, we have to do the improvements. Uh but we don't want, we don't want people to feel like we're putting them over barrel or anything either, so.
Right, exactly.
I think that'd be a good.
Well, a- and I mean, Chuck and you have five lots yet, four lots left, whatever it is, four, and Gary's got.
He's supposedly, Chuck said he was in Iceland, but I think he meant Ireland. Chuck said, what the hell are you doing there?
He's uh, I think they're in Iceland.
Do you think so?
I I think that's what he told me where they were going, yeah. They hadn't been there yet, and so, yeah. Anyway, um he's got how many lots down there yet? Five? I think five.
I don't know what it, because he's got some on the other.
He's got some on the other side too, but um the five that have easy access, water and sewer and everything, you know, so. So right there's nine, and there's a few lots still in town that could, and then there's the five up here. So let's just make that at fifteen. That's without going out to Preston's or Dan's Land up there or, you know, that's just right here.
Yeah.
That's close and ready.
I think the um the Preston stuff.
I'll look for that for another year or so.
Right, but I mean, they're gonna have to replat those lots, and so we're gonna actually get more. So if there's fifty-seven lots there now, they replat them, we're gonna get more properties out of that.
Yeah, I think it'll be closer to a hundred or.
Yeah.
Or more, even they're gonna replat it.
Tighten them up even more?
Yeah, I mean, the 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 way that they're laid out is not optimal for if they were gonna connect to our sewer and stuff like that and to build the infrastructure and everything through there, so I mean, it would have to be redesigned in order to get all that done, but um I mean, now's the time to do it, right? Um but also going forward, none of this uh included any tap fees or anything like that either.
Right.
You know, so that'll be.
But but what it did include, it it says all bills, not just water bills and and, you know. So I mean, to me, we have other things going on, and so that made it that I think the increase is a little bit, but what you're saying, then that takes it back again.
That takes the dollar amount, the that reduces the dollar amount the user will have to pay once we start factoring in tap fees and things like that.
Correct.
So but but again, this is an absolute worst-case scenario too.
Yeah.
And and all of these little details that we can think of will only bring the full the full uh increase dollar amount per user down, so.
Right, exactly.
So I feel like that inflation is always a magic number. If you can get it as close to inflation rate and just be like, it's inflation rate?
Yeah.
We can really be too upset about that.
The only thing, you know, I I can't help it. I I have to go there. Um so in the increases here, really and truly, with with what we have proposed, with well, WRT, sewer and all that, we shouldn't have much problems, the other than the the mains. And that would be the only thing, only large expense I can think of that would be needed after that. But I'm not gonna worry too much about that, because I truly believe that there would be good state grants for that. Either state or federal, either way. I I think I think when they see what we have done, when they see the money that we have already spent, I think they will be very open to um a higher grant amount for us when that time comes. And I'm not expecting that in the next year or two, but but I see that, you know, up in this neck of the woods, somewhere, you know, you're gonna be here. So am I gonna, I hope I'm still here, Donna, maybe not here.
Yeah.
But here in town, yes, I hope I'm still in town, so.
I'll have to rename the town to Ramosa.
I know. We will do no such thing.
Then I'll be going down the street in our little carts.
Anyway, well, very good. All right, so are we ready to?
Yes, let's get on this mess.
All right.
Did you, or you got the plus one from him?
So you need a table in front of you?
No, I'm good. I'm good.
Okay, all right.
They still have those schools at mines, you know, the ones at the flip-up tables?
Uh huh.
And you get that much of a table for it, huh?
Yes.
Just big enough for a piece of paper. That's all you need.
And if your arm moves too much, it's gone. All right, so the budget expense worksheet. Wage expense for the Board of Trustees. In twenty twenty-three, it was thirteen thousand. We budgeted oh, it actually, no, it was budgeted for that, was actually twelve. For the budget in twenty-four was twelve, and we've actually used, so that's just about perfect. No raises coming up? We have not put that in anything, so now that being said, what was your proposal for twenty-five? Okay.
Just left it the same, so.
The I don't have the figures in front of me, but I I was curious to know how many um board meetings were missed by people in twenty-four or in twenty-three, how many missed? So like, if everybody came every time, I think it would be a little more than that.
Well, this is figuring, this is figuring twenty-four regular meetings, times five, which is, times seventy-five is nine thousand dollars, and then we five special meetings, times five, times fifty is twelve fifty.
Five special meetings, so we got the three budget meetings, the one.
Fifty.
Yeah, so that's ten thousand two fifty.
Ten, yeah.
So it's like, still gives you a little bit of a cushion.
So it still gives us a little cushion.
For more special meetings or.
I'm trying to think, there's three budget meetings, one equalization meeting, and one used to be the liquor liquor meeting or?
Was that only for the board? It wasn't for the planning commission or anything?
Yeah, we're talking about the board.
This is just the Board of Trustees, yeah.
If if there was a planning commission, it would also be on this line, though?
No, planning had its own department.
There's and there's, yeah, so it's further down.
I'll just, I'll report it.
Okay.
You'll have to jump around.
Yeah.
Something extreme.
Okay, well, then that's pretty good then, the twelve thousand. Let's go with that.
Okay.
Okay, good. Payroll, that you've done the figuring on that, so that would be right. Same with the workman's comp. You have nothing in there for that? Are we paid in full on that right now, or if nobody uses it?
Yeah, we haven't paid anything, so the line below it is our insurance, but yeah, we haven't had any.
Okay, and the insurance, did they um are they proposing an increase?
Haven't gotten that bill yet. Um not that I'm aware of. I haven't.
Okay. Okay. They're pretty good about giving you heads up at least six months, so I think we should be okay with that. Professional fees and expense, that's one-third of G-Works, oh, all the legal things. And we're at, wow, why are we so low right now?
Well, I think all those subscriptions don't get paid till in the fall, so.
Oh, yeah, that would make sense.
And only G-Works will be coming up and, I mean, I can't hustle and that. I just sent some stuff to American Legal Publishing, because I found we had ordinances that weren't on the website that that we passed, that were passed last year. So they need to be on there, and so that's gonna be about a thousand dollars.
Oh, yay, okay, so that was.
So I wanted I wanted to make sure we were up to date on what um what was actually on the website is the correct one, so.
Okay.
What are you paying for the website?
No, this is for. No, this is for, um, they have American Legal Services, the one that handles like disordinance part of it. They publish those, I, like, they was in place before I started paying, I was.
Do we pay much for our website, just out of curiosity?
Can't go into that later, we need to discuss that now. I don't know.
I'm not even sure.
I only say, cause Nick at the community center does well in development, he builds websites.
Okay.
And he's really good.
Okay. We'll check into the price of that and, and, uh. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so publishing. Wow.
Yeah.
Well, it's necessary.
Well, I know, how come it was budgeted so?
Do you need one of these, hon, do you want one of these?
I've got one.
Got an extra one?
Yep.
You're gonna need a Shannon's, we can print Shannon up anywhere.
I'll just borrow.
That's the expense in the revenue.
And really, with nobody here, if you wanna sit up here and use.
That would feel weird.
I know, but I, I, it's so hard for me to not have a table in front of me, I just, okay.
But you can sit here if you wanted to, I don't care.
You, you have my chair.
Are you gonna go home?
See you all from here. See you all tomorrow.
We'll go have dessert.
Oh, harassment from this board, I'm sorry, honey. Okay, um. So then is that even gonna be enough, three thousand? The publishing, we're already at twenty one, at, um, seven eighteen.
Twenty twenty three, we spent twenty nine, so that's kind of what it's based on, but it might be. With their costs and more, but, you know.
Does that include the new, uh, copiers and stuff like that, or?
No, this is like publishing, our minutes and everything in the newspaper, that kind of stuff.
Just newspaper. This is why I. And, and. I like to keep the minutes. With less in them.
Yeah, right.
Because of the expense, I mean, I know that it's important, it is important. Um, but, and it's not like, you know, a hundred thousand dollars or anything, but it's still an increased amount.
Well, should we just, wh- how does the math pan out based on an average, um. Dollar per month amount from January until July eighteenth? Like, what do we have to, so let's, how many months is that?
That's twice a month.
I mean, that's, you know, basically what, seven and a half months?
It's basically seven months.
So what's twenty one oh nine divided by seven?
Three oh one.
Okay, and then multiply that times twelve.
Three oh one times six.
It's gonna be thirty six hundred something.
Thirty six, yeah.
So we should, let's, we should probably increase it back to four thousand.
I, I think so too.
Give us a, a cushion for what it's likely gonna be if the average.
Well, and all the ordinances, all the new ordinances and resolutions have to be published, and we're gonna have a few. With the new projects coming.
Yeah.
So.
So, but that, that'll be up in the, that was paid out of the professional.
I don't understand how come it was only budgeted a thousand dollars in twenty four?
Yeah.
I, I'm not saying this is correct, but it seems to me like. It had something, something to do with the school project and that we wouldn't be having any of that published anymore. And something else, but I.
Then we went over it, so.
Yeah, well, we, well, we've had a lot of changes.
Well, yeah, I, I realize that, that's why I'm saying I, a thousand, a thousand dollars, I can't believe it.
So plus one. At the end here, okay, so then we have repairs and maintenance, and this is repairs and maintenance to what? We sure haven't spent much money this time. We're at a third.
Because all that computers, I mean, that copier stuff is on the same different total thing, right?
I believe, oh, repaired maintenance, I wonder if this is new locks?
Let's see.
Um.
The finance office is a separate item.
This is for the board, so.
This is due, yeah, this is.
So this year was, um. Air conditioner maintenance and the pest control, it's always that issue so far. Last year would have been for the new keys for the town office.
Let's see.
Pest control and air conditioning maintenance.
So is that a hundred percent of those, or is it split in thirds? The hundred percent of those expenses?
I believe it's a hundred percent, well. Yeah, cause that was a hundred percent of that, so, cause that's what that bill was, I remember.
Okay, so it is a hundred percent, okay. So that kind of stuff is put under board, board costs. Um. Do I think it should be, I don't know, but, I mean, how many more departments we wanna make too, so, and it is, you know, what it is.
Could be split between the finance office and the board.
Well, it could be split between all of them technically, because. You know, without that, we got nothing.
True.
So, but I, I, that's more of a legal question than, uh. I, I don't, if it's been like this for years, I'm guessing it's okay to be like this.
Yeah.
So, it's gotta be somewhere, so. Let's see if we have, and that, that was, uh, bringing that up is a whole nother game, um, question, repair and maintenance. Um, quite often, most companies, each time they have a new board president, they change the locks on everything and we have not. In the last two. Is it something we need to do and is that something we need to put on a future agenda? So that, if you have a notebook for agenda items, that might be something we should discuss. Jerry had the keys changed on everything.
Yeah.
Seven, eight month, whatever it was, however many months ago that was, but, um.
But then we never changed them, yeah.
No, they haven't been changed since then.
Which might not be a bad idea to have them changed, just because.
Just because.
GP.
Uh huh. So, um, so that would make the increase.
And repair and maintenance, we wanna do a plus on that.
Repair and maintenance, well, you have fifteen hundred in there.
See, it was bu- budgeted twenty seven hundred in twenty three.
That's what they spent?
Yeah. No, it was budgeted, they only spent.
Thirteen, thirteen hundred.
Why is there thirty eight, seven, why is it twenty seven, thirty, thirty eight for a budget?
To make the numbers come out, I think, there must be a odd cent somewhere else, I'm guessing.
Oh.
So that is fifteen hundred then enough?
I think it's probably good then.
Does it show how much it cost to have the keys and stuff changed?
Yes, it was. The new keys for the town office was, was six forty seven ninety six. And then there was a walkthrough for the new keys of a hundred and two dollars. So it's, costs seven hundred fifty dollars.
Dollars to have them changed.
Okay, this is something, just as a note here, any other time we've done it, we've done it ourselves, we've not had Harvey's come in and do it for us. And you go up and you buy a new lock set and you put it on, you know, and. So that was, and I, and I think we could still do that, I don't think we'd have to call Harvey's to have everything changed, I think we could do that ourselves.
Call Chuck E's.
And Chuck E's.
Good old Chuck E.
So, so yeah, I'm gonna say that the fifteen hundred dollars should probably be enough.
Well, if we're gonna go that route, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, so. Okay, supplies and materials, so supplies and materials, we're not in very much there right now. What, what do we consider?
What is that clean, no, that's not cleaning, it's.
Well, it could be, if the board is responding, if they're taking all the costs for the office out of the board, then it would be.
So for this year, the only thing was volunteer of the year. The plaque. For the volunteer, and then. Microsoft software, which I believe is what we're paying for when we had that law enforcement. There's a. There's an email associated to the, to Custer County, that I think when you had, um, he, uh, the guy for the law enforcement here. He had, and so then he had Microsoft Office. And so that's an annual fee and I just paid like a hundred dollars, so. But that probably should have.
Oh, it says flags and miscellaneous too.
Okay.
And how are?
And I did just order new parts, um, Bob King was here today, cause if you notice that one, the Hermosa flag, I couldn't get it up all the way in because. The part inside of it, I had to order, and so he was here today and. But it was twenty five bucks for that.
And how are we doing on flags?
We have more in the closet, um, I actually took one of them home and fixed it.
Oh, thank you, Bob usually does that.
He didn't want, he was here.
He didn't say so.
But, and there are, we do have some new flags.
Both kinds?
Yeah, I'm not sure if all three of them, but I know we had, there's another, I know there's more Hermosa and there's more, um, United States flags in there.
Okay, so. I, I just think maybe we could lower that cost, what do you all think?
Yeah.
Yeah, cause we haven't.
So what should we lower it to, should we make up the thousand from the one couple above? And lower it to a thousand?
Yeah.
Okay.
Lower it to five hundred, you mean? You, you wanted to make up a thousand?
I thought, maybe make up a thousand.
Lower, lower that to five hundred.
We always lower repairs and maintenance.
Lower it to a thou, what am I on, the wrong one, supplies and materials?
Cause you had increased the three thousand to four thousand up above, right?
So if we.
That's a thousand dollars you need to make up.
Yep, so if we lower this to a thousand.
That only makes up five hundred dollars.
Three thousand, we'll have that.
Why do, huh, huh?
Oh.
Because why, I'm lost.
We're on repairs and maintenance, we're on supplies and.
We'll raise the publisher.
Cause right now, those two together, the way they are right now, three thousand and fifteen hundred is forty five hundred.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was looking at the next line, supplies and materials or the flags.
And, and maybe you wanna take some out of there, maybe you want, just do a thousand. Take five hundred off there.
Were we taking five hundred off of what? The repairs or maintenance?
Take five hundred off of repairs and maintenance.
Yeah.
So minus five hundred. Okay, and then if we take a thousand off of supplies and materials.
You only need to take five hundred.
Well, for this department, but if we really don't think we're gonna need it, we have it to add elsewhere.
Okay, perfect, so make that five hundred.
We might be able to get a raise for you guys, or, you know, who knows what in that.
Board of trustees.
So you want that five hundred supplies? Or a thousand?
A thousand for supplies.
Thousand. Okay.
So minus a thousand, okay. Travel and conference, okay, well, I know what that is. Where is the, where is the annual meeting this year?
Sioux Falls.
Are you gonna be able to go to that?
I don't know, I don't know anything about it.
So it's the annual conference for municipalities, municipalities. And it's highly recommended that new people go to it, but it is usually a. Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday? Or Tuesday, Wednesday?
Down on a Tuesday and come back on a Thursday, we spent two nights down there.
And it, it basically has all the departments.
It's very interesting, Carol.
It is, it's, it's, you learn a lot really, municipality wise.
And you know, I mean.
You bump into people from other towns that you can talk to and you can hear their stories. And.
I bought my car last year, so, yeah, I can't go with the initiative.
I just can't afford another car.
So the annual conference is the ninth, tenth, and eleventh of October.
October.
So Wednesday, Thursday.
Can you, can you share that or send that to my email, please?
Yeah, I will. I just put this in there, so. I'll try to find my email, or the information's on the S D M, or the website.
The town pays for the conference, it pays for your motel rooms.
And.
And your gas and, and so much per meal.
Okay.
And so your decision and your decision only, you've got the room to yourself, if you wanna take your family. And they wanna do touristy items while you're in the conference, as long as you go to the conference, I'm okay with you taking your family. We're not gonna pay for their meals.
Yeah, we're.
But, but you can take them if you want. And, Aaron, I'm gonna ask you the same question. Um, should you take the board position that I have heard that you have put a letter of interest in for? Um, would you want to or be able to go to that conference?
Only if Cal goes with me.
Where's my family goes?
We'll make a thing of it. Where is it, Sioux Falls?
Sioux Falls.
There's stuff to do out there, man.
Well, I like.
We can't all fit in your Miata.
But that would be a possibility, or you don't have any other commitments during that time?
What is that?
Uh, October ninth, tenth, and eleventh.
No. Nothing that I can think of.
And you have no commitments at this time that you know of either, no planned vacations or?
I usually don't plan stuff that far ahead, but.
Okay.
Uh. You know, I, I don't think I have anything.
Better make it, make a note of it, though.
Make a note of it, just in case, so then, um. Donna would not be going, um, Shanna, I wouldn't ever count on her being able to do anything like that with her, um, health issues. Um, I would love to go. But I probably would not go. So would that cover two people's expenses then? The fifteen hundred? Oh, no, huh, what is it, sorry? Oh, it's five hundred, no, it will not. Two motel rooms, one, two.
Yes, we don't understand how come it says that we only spent.
Because that is this year's. It would have been last year's.
Oh, that's right, last year we went to it, yeah.
And actually, I just got a bill from the Ramcoa on. Your stay there, like, was that where the conference was, was in Pier?
Yeah. You just got a bill?
The bill didn't get paid, they found it when they were auditing.
What? See, they had that all screwed up when we were down there, they canceled the one, they canceled the one room. And we did not cancel that room. So, and of course, right away, it was gone, well, I, you know, I, I don't know if I believe that, but anyway. So then Vicky and I ended up sharing our room.
Right.
Oh.
I remember hearing all about that.
Okay, well, that's good to know, so I'll call them tomorrow, cause I got a bill for you and.
Yeah, we ended up sharing a room because they said that, well, we don't have a room now, and I said, we didn't cancel that room.
Well, they caught this in their audit or something, so that's good to know, I'll call them tomorrow.
Yeah.
And you should be able to find all the receipts and stuff from paying it, you know, from when they did, when you did pay. Or when the other finance officer paid it.
We have to pay, we had to pay for that, yeah, Vicky, Vicky paid for the room.
Oh, she paid for it.
And then that reimbursed?
Reimbursed, that's why I couldn't, cause I couldn't find a bill for the Ramcoa.
Paid for the room.
And I was like, that's what she paid for.
Get our own meal receipts, if I remember right.
So you can look for that, well, good, that's good, this topic of discussion came up.
Yeah, they're, they're always gonna find old bills they wanna send you.
In the past, just so you know, the finance officer has made the reservations for us and paid with the town credit card. And so, uh.
See, yeah, they made the reservations, but they weren't paid for.
Okay, well, normally they are and we will make sure now that they will be, uh, that should.
Well, that's the way it should be.
It, that's the way it should be, it should not have anything, that should not have to become third party bill. So. But I'm saying, uh, uh, so going back to this, I'm saying that, uh, twenty twenty four. Um.
So we're talking travel and conference expenses that we're at?
Yeah, and we're already above. And we're gonna be even further above.
Yeah.
So this five hundred is not gonna cover it, I would definitely make it a thousand. And I don't think that's enough, motel rooms now generally, a hundred and fifty a night, if you're paying. Three nights, two motel rooms, right there, you're talking. Nine hundred dollars, so, and that's without food and expenses, so maybe we need to go a little higher than that.
Be able, they might have blocks of rooms usually, you know, that they.
Um, and it also depends on where it's at, well, and we won't know where it's at until, or.
Hold for next year, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it should, comes up until at the conference.
Do they get special conference pricing?
Yes, but it's, it's. It's not like it goes down to sixty bucks, you know.
I think the only meal we had to pay for was dinner. Because they have lunch and they have.
Well, they have two dinners.
Well, we had continental breakfast at the motel.
So you wanna increase that by fifteen hundred to two grand?
I, I think we had better.
And then now, I mean, there's already a hundred eighty shaved up. And then now, I mean, there's already a hundred and eighty shaved up and that already, so.
Yeah.
And we're down to eighteen twenty remaining. And so if you do nine hundred for the rooms, and that'll leave another nine hundred for the expenses.
Gas expenses and. So yeah, I'm afraid we do have to increase that to two thousand.
For travel and conference?
Yeah, so we're gonna say plus fifteen hundred, so that we've already. Made up that five hundred we were above and we're still minus a thousand then, the way I see it. Okay, other expenses. Wow, we're over and above on that, oh yeah.
Well, that.
The trap and neuter.
We have that five hundred dollar. We, we made a motion to increase that budget by five hundred dollars, but we'll have to do a formal supplement to do that.
For this year?
Yes.
And then next year?
So next year, that's.
Well, next year, if we've, we've already gotten rid the most. We shouldn't be, we shouldn't have.
Hundred out of fifteen hundred, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, hopefully.
But the first of it, first of the doing should be done the worst.
Aren't we really twelve hundred out of a thousand right now?
Well, there was a motion made at, uh, at a meeting to increase that by five hundred dollars, it just hasn't been formally supplemented because. You have to do a formal supplement to change that budget.
So, and then there's also this, I, I still hear from, um, town people that they don't think that that is the town's responsibility.
Yeah.
So.
The trap neuter release?
Uh huh.
We could just. They won't be happy if you stop doing it.
Well, that, that, I agree with you on that.
We could just take the total budget down to five hundred then.
Because of the fact we've gotten rid of the first.
Most, we got rid of most of them. Five hundred a year is probably a decent estimate for the yearly maintenance.
There's gonna be these three's coming in and having more?
Well, we're getting them neutered enough that, that hopefully we don't, um, but. So you're saying take it down to five hundred? You wanna make it seven fifty? And.
I make sure, whatever.
Get a.
I think we should take it on seven fifty now.
Okay, so seven fifty it is.
On that.
So there.
That's fine, let's see.
We've gained seven fifty. Um, so now we're down two hundred and fifty.
That's on other expenses is what that's on.
Yeah, other expenses. And we don't, supplies and materials. Travel and conference, how come there's two travel and conference?
Okay, this, the next set of numbers is actually.
They're the same number.
That's election, it just doesn't, this should say election.
They are the same number.
They're the same numbers.
So why is it in there twice?
But this is a different depart- oh, down here.
There's two travels.
Forty-two, seven hundred.
Yeah, but the middle number is different. One's forty-one, one's.
So I think that four, one, one, five, zero is actually contingency. So you can have a contingency fund, and then you can just transfer from the contingency fund, so yeah.
Okay, equipment. Um, I don't know what was budgeted, but.
Nothing was budgeted last year.
Right.
Like I say, all these, these four, one, one, five, zero in the middle, the numbers, that's all, it's a contingency fund.
Okay, well, we'll not mess with that. Okay, so then that takes us to wage expense.
And this is actually, and I, I probably, this is, so now we're into election stuff, I believe.
That would make sense, yeah.
Yes.
Custer County.
Cause, so next year, we'll have three board positions, and the county won't have a, typically an election because it's a. It's an odd year, so we'd have to do our own election. This year we got by pretty cheap, we only had to pay three hundred and twenty dollars.
Right.
Cause we combined with the counties.
Um, but don't we, won't we be able to combine with the school board?
School, yeah.
And then it still saves us a little money, but it, but it will be more.
It'll be more than the three hundred and twenty, yeah.
And so your guess there was eight fifty?
Yeah. That's what they, looks like it's, it's been budgeted the last twenty-three, twenty-four, so.
Yep, I, that'll, I think that's good. What does everybody else think?
Which line you want now?
Um, right here.
That's what I thought.
This line here.
Okay, alright, that's right, oh, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I see.
And then, so you've got the payroll and the supplies and materials and, and there's no travel. Um, all that should be good, I would think. Five hundred. So we have to publish that, and that'll cost us more because we have to do it and not the, not the county does it. I think we probably better leave that unless we want to make up our two hundred and fifty dollars. And take it out of publishing expense. Think that's a doable thing, or no?
If you look at with the twenty twenty-three amount with.
I know, I was wondering why that was so much. Oh, that was because we had the, um. The publishing of the chicken ordinance and the, um, ordinance to.
The term limits.
Term limits, yes. So we had two extra publishings that time, so. I, I. Yes, so I don't believe. That, I mean, that's, that was a rare instance, having those. Um, not to say that there wouldn't maybe be one, um. I don't know, but. I, I think we could lower that price a little. The publishing price, so let's go ahead and take out the two hundred and fifty, so that our expense goes to zero again. Terry, you think that's good? So that brings us to zero at that line item. So, finance office. Budgeted. Spent. Budgeted. Spent. So where are we gonna come up on that, Terry? Here it says twenty-five seventy-five, blah, 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 blah.
So we're, we're good.
We're good without giving you a rate.
Well, we're not into the finance officer, right?
No, that's, oh, no, I know, no, I, I already knew we were good on the other one, sorry.
Okay, sorry.
I'm on wage already, I wasn't giving you the time, excuse me. So wage expense.
And I did figure a three percent in there.
Increase? Which is, takes you to what?
Takes to twenty-five seventy-five.
And what are you at now?
Twenty-five. And I also put, so I also, and I did that for all, for.
For everyone.
Just because that was a CPI with three percent, so I was figuring.
And are you okay with that?
I think it should be twenty-six dollars.
Yeah, twenty-six is such a nice.
Yeah, I, I agree, I, I'm, I'm with you, sorry.
She's worth it.
Yeah, well, actually, from the knowledge that I have. From my time sitting here, I think she's worth more, I just, I, I just don't know that we can afford more, so, um. But yeah.
So is that just Terry's wages now?
That one is just Terry's, yes. And so the payroll tax will have to get increased. The retirement, all that follows. And expenses goes up a little bit because of that. Sorry, that makes the paperwork fuzzy.
One question I did have, so I noticed in the, in the. Previous years, they say less twenty percent to the BB and B, but it's not set up that way, that.
No, it is not.
Twenty percent, so.
It, there was thought that it would be because the finance officer was going to be doing.
Is it for the economic development?
Economic development, thank you. It, it's in my mind, it just wouldn't stop anywhere. Economic development, yes.
I mean, those numbers I have, I mean, I just. Basically did same as what they did last year, so that's less twenty percent of my wages, and that's put in the, so we might have to adjust that.
I see what you're saying.
Cause that's a different.
But, maybe not too. Part of, even part of this. Resolution and stuff that you just did would be considered economic development, wouldn't it? So, so that on a list.
Can, what I'll have to do is next change that the way that's, when I, when my payroll's done, that is. Cause right now, it's not taking any of my wages out of that fund, so that's what I'm.
Maybe there was nothing done, I don't know, but, but now, like what I know you have done this month.
Okay.
Just, um, let's make a note to ask the attorney if that does fall into BB and B economic development. Okay. So, I'm not gonna write down all the difference in changes, but it would take it all the way down to. Wouldn't it take it all the way down to the admin health insurance? The increase would have to go partly down there, I mean, it, it will change your retirement expense. It will change the workman's comp expense. It'll change the, no, won't change the health insurance, no.
Yeah, it won't change the health.
Admin wage expense.
And that's, that's Jill, or, so that's Jill's.
Oh, that one's Jill's.
Wait, wait, does that speak Jill's?
And so what does that increase, she is at what right now?
She's at twenty dollars an hour, and so fifteen percent of hers is for, goes to sewer. Five percent goes to. The BBB, and I think. Twenty-five percent to water, so.
What is, what does that mean?
Um, so. When you're actually breaking it down, her workload consists of fifteen percent of it would be water. Fifteen would be sewer, however the breakdown is.
Pulls those amounts from that part of the budget.
Correct.
Yeah, pulls from those different funds, so, so when you get to the, the BBB and the water and the sewer fund, you'll see expenses for her wages.
Correct. Okay, so, um. What is, her wage is at twenty right now, what that would put her at what?
Um. I think twenty dollars and sixty cents, so.
How does everybody feel about that? That's a sixty cent an hour raise. Did you tell me twenty-one sixty?
No, twenty dollars and sixty cents, yeah, it's only six, three percent.
Sixty cent wage.
So we'd go to twenty-one?
Nah, I don't know, I'm just asking what everybody feels like. She did get a how much dollar raise?
Three dollars last year.
So let's drop it to two fifty, can we do that? I mean, two sixty, I mean, twenty sixty just seems funny to me, I don't.
Twenty fifty?
Twenty fifty? I mean, that ain't much, maybe it's easier to do the twenty sixty, I don't know.
I was just doing a three percent.
Yeah, you were doing three percent. But she did get three dollars this year, so, actually more than that, I think. Cause she got a, a yearly wage increase, and then she got that increase to come back, I think. Sorry.
I believe she was making seventeen.
Girl, I'm at a budget meeting, I'm gonna have to call you tomorrow, this is gonna be a late one, or you call me tomorrow. When you have time, okay? Alright, thanks, honey, bye.
So when she left, she was making seventeen, and then when she came back, she was, she got a twenty, up to twenty dollars, plus she got all her. Benefits reinstated, her vacation and sick leave, whatever.
Well, I don't know much.
So that's what I can find in the minutes, so.
I, I'm, I'm just saying, I think fifty cents is.
Yeah, I think so.
With what she got this year, I think that is enough.
Well, that's just it, you know? If, if that's the case, then I think we should, I think we should give Terry two dollars, you know?
Well, that, we're not saving, we're not saving a whole dollar, we're only saving ten cents.
Well, right, I realize that.
I, I, I would, I would love to, but it's only ten cents, so, I mean, we.
Ten, ten cents, make a dollar.
Well, a dollar a day.
Yeah, I think twenty-five, or twenty-one fifty.
Twenty-one fifty or twenty?
Twenty fifty.
Twenty fifty, yeah.
Cal, how do you feel about that?
Uh, just whatever you guys think, I'm not super. I don't have a.
An opinion one way or the other?
Yeah.
So with twenty sixty, that's three percent, that's, that's the inflation rate?
Well, it's a clean.
But she already got three dollars, so. This year.
She got well above this year, and. And if, if it would ever come to be that we would do anything about planning and zoning, then her workload goes way down. Because she got that raise because of planning and zoning. And, and next year, really and truly, with all the projects we go, got going on. Next year, her workload shouldn't increase too much. By the following year, planning and zoning will. But she'll be working hard on that, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, she will. I mean, we can kick some of it to Benish too.
Yeah, the work, workload, yes, absolutely, yeah. So what does that take the numbers to? Or actually, you don't even have to, if you don't wanna figure that out right now, you can do that and, and. Our third meeting will actually take a little longer, which I'm okay with, if you are.
That'd be better, then I can do it, I hate to do it in a rush.
I know, I know.
I get stressed out.
Yeah, so let's just do that then, okay?
So, make those changes.
So we.
Are twenty, twenty fifty?
Twenty, twenty fifty would be the hourly wage that we will be paying.
For administration.
For administration. So all those numbers, the admin payroll, the admins of retirement. They will change, so we won't have the bottom line on that until the next meeting. Okay, so then that takes us to, um. And you know, you could, if you had time before the next meeting, if you had time to call, um. South Corfitt or whatever, and just see if they think there's gonna be an increase.
Oh, in the insurance?
In the insurance, that would be very helpful too. Municipally, sorry, yeah. Yep. Okay, so that takes us to, um, other insurance. Is that for the? Building, or what is, what is, what have we got there?
Um, so, that is SDPAA. So, South Corfitt Municipal League, I think is what it is. Oh, and I didn't get anything in there, sorry.
Okay, so that one will need to be looked into, so if you will have that, those numbers by the next, and you can just print it up, print us out a new form. Professional fees expense, I presume this is our attorney?
No, the attorney is a separate.
Oh goodness.
So this is, um.
Pretty cheap for an attorney.
Well, yeah, you're right.
This is Golden West, so our monthly, um. Which is like five hundred some dollars, and then it looks like we had other IT support, and then. It included an audit, which next year, cause he's supposed to be auditing up this year, but.
Correct.
And he's doing a two-year audit, I believe, or is it just for one year?
I think last year, he couldn't, he didn't have time to do it. And it was legal to put it off a year, and so he asked if we would do that, and we said yes.
Okay, cause I think all he asked for was a twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
So it is the one, so we'll. If he gets it done this year, that'll be the thing, cause he just contacted me not too long ago about.
Okay.
So I don't know, but that included, looks like it had seventeen hundred for an audit. As part of that, so.
Alright. Well, I think we just have to keep that about the same. Well, I think we just have to keep that at about the same, because I, we can't go. One of the reasons it went down, every, everybody, if you noticed that it went down a little, um, we did change auditors. Our, our past auditor was very expensive, so we changed to this gentleman that also does keystones. And he's, he was very, we were very pleased with what he had done, so. Okay. Repairs and maintenance. Is that building? Fire extinguishers, yeah, yeah. Office repairs, is there anything needed? Anything that we can foresee happening with the building that needs to be done, that will be expenses?
Other than the air conditioning, whatever.
We have, I have a couple little things, but nothing that I know of that's major. If we decide that it needs to be painted, I can come up here and paint, and, um, it looks like the windows are all sealed okay, and drapes and stove and refrigerator are working fine. Um, office chairs, we have enough.
Yours isn't squeaking, is it?
Those belong to the library?
Yes, but we'll be able to use those for, yeah. So I think, um, I think we're okay. I, I, I don't think I'd lower it, I think I'd maybe keep it about the same, and if we end up not spending that much, we'll have a little more that we can put into roads or whatever. In the middle of the year, you know? Okay, um, supplies and materials. Well, that's, we're pretty much right where we say we should be, so I would say, unless the price of things have gone up so horribly, um. Travel and conference, um. Well, you need to go to every one that there is, if, if you possibly can. And the only reason I say that is it's municipal, you've never done municipal, you, you need to just continue to go to them. Um, from every finance officer we've ever had, um, they say they're not really totally comfortable until the third year has passed. And so until that time comes, um, every conference is a necessity in my opinion. And even after that, just to keep up with any new laws, regulations, it's good too. So if we need to add to that, um, that's fine. If you think that'll work, um, we can leave it there.
Are they always in the same place?
No, it varies from year to year, so that each township will have balanced travel time and costs.
Do you know where it's gonna be next year?
However, they have made it so that it's, they have a remote location, am I right on that, on some of those conferences? Like the conference is actually in Pier, but they do a remote tie in Rapid City?
I know, the budget meeting they had, a couple, they had one in Rapid, and then one, I believe, in Sioux Falls. And then, um, Finance Officer's School was in Spearfish this year, so I'm guessing it'll be.
Yeah, on the other side of the state, next year, yeah, so.
So seven, if it's in either of those seven fifties, not gonna cut it?
Not quite gonna cut it, yeah.
I think we should leave it at a thousand.
Go to a thousand on that, okay?
I mean, we're, yeah, but we're gonna have to watch and see, cause if it's in, I mean, even if it's in Pier, even if it's in Pier, a thousand's gonna be pushing it.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Probably.
But.
And is there only one conference per year?
No. Um, there's the Finance Officers one, and then there's the Election one, and there's a Budget one, and.
So you want her to go to all those?
I, 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 I think it's good, I think it's good, uh, communication with the other cities, I think it's good for her. Um, I think it's good for the town, I think it's money well spent.
So then even a thousand's not gonna be enough?
So you wanna go up to twelve fifty or fifteen hundred?
Well, I mean, is, is the conference just a one-day event generally?
Eh, uh, generally, depending on where it's at, if, but one, I don't know that there's ever been any that are two, unless the, unless she had to drive all the way to Sioux Falls, have a day in Sioux Falls, and then getting home would be.
Eighty-five dollars one way. Takes you how long to get there?
If it's a Sioux Falls one, we should budget for two hotel stays, we shouldn't expect her to drive home the same night.
I agree with you, she shouldn't have to drive home the next day.
And, and safety sake. Yeah, I mean, and then if we're doing multiple conferences, I mean, I, I mean, we could put in whatever we want, but I just think we should look at it and see where we're at even before the next twenty, twenty-five.
So what you're asking is for her to call the Finance Officers and ask if they know where the, where they are?
Yeah, it'd be a good thing to, to start off.
Okay, so let's put a question mark in there, and, um, you can make that phone call before the next meeting too. And if, and if Thursday's not enough time for you, we'll delay it further.
Well, and the other thing too, is all I'm saying is, we can put a number in there tonight, and then just run with that up until April twenty twenty-five, after she does her first conference. And then if we need more, we can do a, a motion or something like that, but
Okay.
It probably won't help for budgeting purposes, doing it like that either, right?
Well, that's why I said, if she called, we would have a better idea, and if we really needed. Now, does this also, um, include Jill's? And would Jill have any that you think would be beneficial, um, from what you have seen in the last?
Yeah, she does.
Well, how long has it been since you've been here, honey?
Five months.
Really?
That's it.
That's it, I know.
Seems long.
I know, I know.
Uh-oh.
In a good way, for Microsoft.
Seems like five years, right?
Um, is, is there any conferences that you have seen or heard that have come up that would be beneficial to Jill at this point in time?
I mean, not that I have, I don't.
Okay, alright, and I don't recall any other than when she was.
And I can ask her if she has any.
When she was doing, coming on with the waterworks, um, she had a lot of training and stuff from there, um, that she could do here in the office.
Right.
Um, seemed like she did have to seemed like there was something that was far away, but maybe she got to do that on Zoom too, I don't know, but, yeah, you could ask her on that, and.
Yeah, I mean, the thing is, like for hotels, then you can generally say it's about a thousand dollars a week, just for the hotel.
Right, yeah, exactly.
When I was traveling, essentially that's what it was.
Yep. Okay, so that brings us utilities expense. Um.
So what does that mean, the lights on in here and?
Well, I
I don't know.
I just don't see the price of any of that coming down, you know, so well, I hate to say it, but I'd like to see that
Do the five.
Back at the five thousand, what does everybody else think?
I was gonna say, I think we better go back up to five thousand on that one, because.
Okay. Okay, phone and fax. That, that looks good to me, I don't know. Um, other expenses, what do we got for others? We've spent quite a bit of other already, but.
My program's not working.
Yeah, okay.
Is that yours?
No, cause they're under, they were up under professional fees.
No, the program you're using?
So both of these cameras, these are video only, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
No sound.
Yeah, those.
You wanna keep it that way?
We have talked about that, but that's, where did we talk about that at? Is that under another department? Let's have her finish with it. Just so you know, everybody, I am.
Basically, the two signature account, I'll take the bank. Some odd things here.
Oh!
I'll start that, Donna, we still have ten pages to go.
I, I just noticed that myself, that we are, have only gone through the one page, and it's already what time it is, so. We're gonna discuss that too, I am just sending my husband a text that says I will not be home by eight.
Yeah, it's like bank charges, and it looks like the Adobe software was taken out, I'm not sure why. And I don't know, you could probably, I think we could probably put that down a little bit.
So where did you decide it is?
Well, it's like bank charges, and it's like when we get, Prime Your Bank, we got charged twenty-five dollars for the two signature, whenever we change, we won't have that cost with Bank West, so.
So let's take it down to two, what do you think?
Absolutely.
Okay? Well, and we won't have the change so many times either, there was many changes last year, so. Okay, block the page, brings us to equipment expense.
Hmm, that's the copier.
That's the copier, and we were actually, um.
Budgeted six thousand spent already.
But we were at a higher rate earlier this year, and then we switched over, and we're actually saving money now, so. I just figured the five forty a month, times twelve, is probably came up to sixty-four eighty.
Okay, well then I'm gonna say you're good.
Usually five thirty-five, so, so it gives me a little bit of.
Little playroom?
If we go over on the number of copies we made, so, but we get more color ones now, and, so.
Good, computer software.
That's.
That's pretty much done deal.
Yeah, that's the Adobe, so.
Okay, so our total expenses are gonna change, so I'm just putting question marks there until, um, Terry has time to do the work. Um, professional fees, this is our attorney, and.
So the thirty thousand would be his twenty-five hundred, so we only spent ten hours a month.
Well, we're gonna tell him, when our ten hours is up, you have to leave.
Well, this will increase if we decide to put in a TIF, do a TIF.
Right.
This will increase. Do we believe that the TIF is gonna happen within the next twelve months? Yes. So the, would the TIF funds be taken out or allocated through the TIF usually, the TIF pays its own attorney fees.
So that could be taken out.
So that would be taken out of there, so that being said, um, unless we have some major problems, things are going rather smoothly, I think. Thank you, yeah. I got, I got, I got the stick in my hair, I can always knock it. So, um, I, I think we'll be okay with that, anybody, everybody, or you wanna increase it just in case, or?
Oh, you know, we could probably just leave it for now.
And that is something, that reminds me now, I'm getting all these notes for you, and I apologize for that, but hopefully it'll make it easier in the long run. So even at the last meeting, we discussed TIF. So if you can keep a record of how many minutes we spend each meeting or discussing TIF, we can get reimbursed for those funds.
Okay.
And we might as well be keeping a record of it.
Right, might as well get it reimbursed.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. Okay, alright, let's go down then to custodian fees. Okay, so, did you give her an increase also?
Yeah, I did three percent, so right now Bond is making sixteen an hour, so. I put her at sixteen forty-eight, I don't know if it's coming out of her, but.
Well, let's make it sixteen fifty. Sixteen forty-eight sucks.
You can call up a claim for sixteen fifty.
Well, when we need one, we'll call you. Right now, she's doing a very good job, I think.
I'll put it at twenty. Eleven, he had to change, cause I think I.
Well, it's only two cents an hour.
Yeah, so it doesn't really change the amount, so it changes it from twenty-three seventy-five to twenty-three seventy-six, cause I just rounded that out, cause I'm not gonna deal with. So I think we'll be okay, yeah.
Yeah, that'll just be a little bit, okay. Professional fees, engineer, whoa. Whoa.
Yeah, so this, I mean, we're already way over, but I know, when talking to Anthony, some of that SRF money that we're gonna get.
We'll pay.
We can, we can move into, so we'll be able to, so I just, I
Yes.
I wasn't sure what we wanted.
The SRF's that two point two million that took, uh, maximum. Yeah.
So.
We'll be able to take a lot of his fees out of that, as much as he has worked, and I don't know, this is a question for Anthony.
Okay.
Um, can any of his fees be taken out of the ARCA funds for the work on that expense?
Okay.
That we could get paid back, and so that being said, when you are, um, going through each meeting, how many minutes did he spend on those subjects, so it could be taken out of those expenses?
Okay.
Okay? Um, so I'm gonna say leave it at what you got it at, because I
Yes.
I, I would hope that actually, with the fees being taken out of there, that we could lower it.
Yeah, and what do, what do you guys think, uh, I mean, cause all of this stuff's going crazy right now with all the projects and all the work he's doing. But once it's all done, what's like a good maintenance amount, right? And we don't know what that's gonna be right now, right?
No.
We don't even have a ballpark, right?
Well, you can see here through the years, I mean, the total in twenty twenty-three, we only spent twenty-seven thousand.
Yeah.
So, you know, but to be done with all the projects, we're looking at basically a year and a half or two years from now, correct? Yeah, somewhere in that neck of the woods.
I mean, he and he, because the thing is, so, for instance, if, if we end up doing well with the currently annexed land up there, there, that doesn't actually cover all of the buildable land in that area.
Correct, yes.
And there's still more plots that they may wanna do something with in the future, so.
That would take.
That, that would increase the, the amount of engineering we would need there too.
Mm-hmm, so we're not even gonna discuss the lowering of it for a few years?
Definitely not, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so sixty-seven thousand, I, I think we'll just leave it at that then, I, I think that's as fair as we can be right now.
Well, yeah, but the thing is too, like you're saying, we can, we're just gonna offset it with the loan amounts anyways, and then amortize it, so.
Right.
And the other thing too, I mean, we got CD interest and everything, which I'm not saying we should necessarily spend on this, but that's gonna help offset all this type of stuff.
Yes, mm-hmm. Yeah, I, I would expect that number to, actually, for what comes out of our pockets, I would expect that number to go way down for next year. Um, I think that, um, we need to look at, um, the engineers doing the, the reports on every, especially floodplain permits. Um, I, I think that we don't want any issues where those permits are concerned, and so our expense may be in that area rather than in, you know, what we're doing now, so, okay, we'll leave that then. Uh, law enforcement, well, here we go, what do you got, you actually have?
I actually had to take some money from there to, to kind of make it, so I, we had talked about me doing a part-time person, so.
I just don't see it possible.
Yeah, so.
I'm just gonna put a whole bunch of question marks in that, yes. I'm just gonna put a whole bunch of question marks in that. Yes.
People are riled up.
That there is none. Okay. What is the biggest issue we have in town? Speeding. Speeding, speeding, speeding. If we have something major.
That's, that's, it's, it's, it's not so much the, like, yeah, the speeding annoys people. That's not it. It's, well, so we had a boxing match on fairgrounds a few weeks ago. They had to call the sheriffs. We don't need a sheriff for that. We need a marshal.
No, we don't. What did we get from the sheriff's department? Nothing. Nothing. They don't do nothing for us.
That's the difference. A marshal isn't just law enforcement.
And he'll never be here when you need him. I'll tell you what, if you're gonna hire a law enforcement, I'm stepping down. I will not, I will not, I'm stepping down from being a chairperson because we do not and we cannot afford a marshal. Well, all I'm gonna say is that right now, Terry has in the figures that we have seventy-five thousand eight hundred dollars to pay a marshal.
Right.
But when we are.
You're not gonna hire one for that.
When we're all done, when we're all done with the budget and we have to come up with, we're above or we're below, this is the best way to take it out. And then I, I ha, I, I would also love to have one. I just don't know that if it's, that it can financially be done. And not, and not just because of that. Financially, it could be done if we paid one thirty-five dollars an hour. And if, I think we could get a part-time one for thirty-five dollars an hour. Mm-hmm, and i- if we can, and if we can get one part-time for thirty, and we can find one, and it is in the budget, if we have the budgeted funds for it, I think that's a very good use of our money. However, right now, uh, uh, I mean, the people can be as outraged as they want. We flat can't find anybody to hire. And we're not the only ones. Every city in the country is having that same problem and they are, everybody's increasing their wages because they have to.
And they can't afford to live, to buy a house and on the wages.
Oh, and this is only part-time for thirty thousand five hundred a month, which means that our marshal would have to go work at Corner Pantry on his off time.
Right.
Which would make up the difference.
He's not gonna be able to.
Really, I mean, this is, you know, something we can work with, but ideal. Realistically, you can't even hire a part-time marshal. Realistically, you have to have a full-time marshal with provisions for overtime.
Right. And, eh, right, exactly. I mean, technically for this, for this community, you're correct, but if you don't have it, you don't have it.
That's right, yeah.
In order to pay one full-time, we'd have to increase that budget to a hundred and fifty thousand. And.
And that would still be low.
And that would still be low.
To get a quality person because you, if it's only gonna be one guy, he's gonna have to be a real high-quality person.
Well, he's gonna have to, yeah.
That's the nightmare of the job is that one guy, he's, his life, that's, that's his life.
Yeah, and how many wanna do that?
So which is why.
But the right person, who, the right person doing that is worth a lot.
It is, it is worth a lot.
You can't find the right person.
But we'd have to find that right person. And we have to have the budget and we have to have the right person. The only thing I'm saying is for as part-time goes, if, if we'd have the money to pay somebody thirty-five dollars an hour, it would be somebody that was already doing it full-time in Rapid City or full-time in Custer or full-time for the, for the highway patrol department. And it would be an extra income from them.
Well, that's what might mean what you want to find a marshal anyway, is somebody to get their toes into the world and be like, oh, well.
And, and that might work.
An environment I wanna be in.
Right, that might work. And, and we'll just have to see at the end of the budget time where we're sitting at this, at this amount. That's the best explanation I can give you for.
Well, my brother retires in three years and he's been twenty-seven years on the floor, seventeen years on the floor, so I'm trying to get him out of here.
And, and he's in New York?
Yeah.
Oh, this would be a totally different world for him, wouldn't it?
Oh, he would love it. He never wants to be a cop again, but he's a cop forty-five minutes from New York City. So it's basically bodies all day, every day.
Crystal's in Chicago and I told Buzz it'd be the last damn place. I'd be going right now.
Yeah.
What is she doing in Chicago?
Conference. I relooked her conference.
Oh my, okay. Anyway, oh, and then are your folks gonna move out here too? With both their boys out here?
We gotta find land so we can bring the cows. Sell the cows. Unless Meg of ours wants to start up the dairy again, we'll bring our cows there.
We used to have several dairies around here.
I, yeah, I've heard and it's sad. Well, that's nationwide.
It is nationwide, yes.
They're all getting wiped out.
Yeah, exactly. Well, when you homogenize the milk and all the things they're doing and it lasts for a year before it goes bad. I'm sorry, but anyway, okay. So let's move on to, um, inspections.
That's Chuck's when he does inspections.
So for next year, we should be all right on that. The following year, we're gonna have to raise that up. Or get him some more help or do something. My opinion, anyway. Okay, so that takes us to streets. And the streets come in the next, yep, we get some, okay. So wage expense, nothing.
I talked to Chuck and he told me just to leave all the things.
He said he would like to see the town purchase a locator.
How much is that?
About thirty-five hundred, a good one.
I thought part of the reason he got his raise was so he could buy his own locator.
Well, he just doesn't see why he should have to buy the locator because it's tight. The town's the one that needs locator, not him.
But the raise was supposed to help him offset the cost of that though, wasn't it? That's, that's the story I remember hearing too.
Yes.
So what's he using to locate right now?
Well, nothing right now, but.
Oh, really?
You know.
His memory.
Yeah. And thank God it's good.
Don't we have, I thought Jill said we had something like that in the office, like through that. His little iPad and.
That's not a locator.
That's not a locator.
It's like a shoe tagger.
Okay. I just knew we had something that we.
The, the locator basically scans the ground and will tell you where the pipe is, right? Using x-rays or.
Yep, it's got, yeah, it's the wires been put on like it's supposed to be.
And so that would be something that would be probably taken out of the water and sewer.
That's what he wants, is an actual.
It wouldn't be out of the streets.
The GPR?
Cuz if you're locating.
Like an actual scanner?
Cuz when we pay him for the locates, we're taking, we're dividing it to some water and sewer.
I mean, if the town has one, anybody can be trained on it.
Yeah, but he was supposed to buy one with the raise, so.
Well, that, that actually technically, that actually technically wouldn't come out of streets anyway. It would come out of sewer and water. So we'll leave streets exactly the same and be good with that. Okay? That takes us to garbage. Um, have you called the garbage company? And how long is our contract with them?
That I don't know.
So we'll need to know how long our contract is for. Um, right here. Garbage. So we decided that streets will stay exactly the same, so that brings us to garbage. Okay, so, um, you'll need to do that before we can actually make those figures exactly also. So we'll just hold that where that's at. P and Z. Okay, we've got this all at zero right now. And, um, at this point, I think we've decided that we're okay with that. We're actually talking about having Anthony's coworker, what is his name again? Neil. Neil, maybe if we need some P and Z, we might go through him rather than having a P and Z board. This is all yet to be totally determined. Um, I guess we would need P and Z funds if we put him in charge of P and Z. So.
Where's Seattle?
He's.
Mitchell.
He's, he lives in Mitchell, but he has been, had been their planning and zoning person for five years, ten years, and he, he's went to college for, I mean, he's got his degree in.
He works with Benish.
Yeah, he does work with Benish, so. Um, that'll, that's kind of all to be determined. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put a big question mark there and we'll see where we're at at the end. The one thing, I mean, switching some funds around might have to happen, but right now we just don't know, so. Capital outlay expense. Well.
Oh, yeah, I wasn't sure. We haven't put anything in there for.
Never been anything in there.
I mean, we should.
Land, see, here's where the land deal would be. For buying the lot up there, so that's thirty-six hundred. Is that what the proposal was?
Yeah.
Thirty-six hundred.
Well, I mean, we'll have to, we'll have to see if.
If they go for that.
I think this is just a starting low number. I mean, cuz if, if it's, if it's point four eight acres and even, even if we're going a thousand dollars an acre, it should still be like forty-eight hundred. Right?
Ten thousand acre, forty-eight hundred, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Ten thousand acre.
So let's leave that as a little question mark and however, we should probably put buildings. Well, there will be buildings, but that is also gonna be covered under the grant loan thing.
Talking about for the treatment plant and stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all part of that.
Yeah.
As far as, uh, would a new air conditioner for this building be a capital improvement?
Hmm, I don't think so. And wouldn't that be under the expenses, the board expenses where everything else for the building was taken out of? I don't, I don't know. Maybe that's a question for Kent.
Cuz it's a large, it's gonna be a large amount.
Yeah, they're high dollar now.
Completely replacing it.
Yeah.
Or we could, I mean, I almost wonder if we could get by with some mini splits in different areas to, to cover it rather than a giant central one. That we have to pay all this money to pump the air through all these ductworks and everything like that. Whereas a mini split, you're just dumping the air right where it's at. So you don't have all that energy penalty of pumping air throughout the whole building.
But more on demand too.
Yeah.
I mean, more re-inhere a few hours.
Yeah.
So that's worth looking into too, so.
Yeah, they're way more efficient than a central, central one, so.
Okay, alright, that's a good point. Thank you. Um.
Anyway, keep going.
Okay. So we have a question there and the equipment expense, that would all be a question there. Um, do you have an idea what that would cost if we changed to that?
Uh, it just depends on, um, I don't, I mean, I have to look at the numbers, look at the square footage and stuff like that cuz it's, it, it just basically would be a raw calculation based on square footage, but, um, I mean.
Okay.
Not a whole lot here.
But, well, but then we'd have to do it for the building, for the library next door too.
Yeah.
Because it's.
So it's all on one system.
I believe so, isn't it? All one system, I think so.
I think it's this one.
I think so. So we'll, we'd have to research all that too.
Yeah, well, in that case, it might not be that.
Efficient?
That, well, operating would be cheaper, but capital outlay, I don't know that it would be much cheaper. And it'd be more com- complexity as well cuz you have multiple outdoor units, multiple air handlers in different locations.
Okay, so that being said, when, when we had the air conditioner guy come out, did he say you better look at buying a new one or did he say it would?
Yeah, he, he, well, he gave us a quote for that. Wasn't that, was that, it's nine thousand dollars to repair. That's what that was.
Yeah, but the, I haven't looked at, but what Chuck said was it, it just rusted out because the condensation line was blocked. And so obviously it's still working fine. You know, maybe we could get by with some maintenance on it, uh, swap out the refrigerator or whatever, recharge the oil or whatever it needs to do. And then just do a, do a repair on that sheet metal that's rusted out and then make sure we got a good condensation line.
Okay.
You know, maybe even just have a place in town make us a stainless steel tray for it. We don't even have to worry about it again.
If we are doing, how, how big is that, do you think?
I have not, I don't even, I haven't looked at any of that at all, so I couldn't even tell you.
Eh, the unit size is.
It's not, I mean, it's. The filters are sixteen by sixteen by two, I put in there.
Okay, alright, so.
Yeah.
I was just thinking because I have some stainless steel.
There's two of them cuz I put two filters in, so it's her two units.
Yeah, I'll have to go look at that, I suppose.
Okay.
So there's nothing mechanically wrong with the unit? It's just the.
Doesn't, doesn't appear to be. They had it every year. Every year we go through this. And I think this year they had it done way better than it was done, whatever was done the years before, so.
What's it do?
It just flat didn't work. It, it was.
It freezes. I mean, it's been, I mean, when we called him, it had froze up, so. And it's like, you know, make sure you check the filters and when I try to not crank it up like some people.
Yeah, I, I know at home.
For not here, I try to.
I turn mine off for at least an hour in the morning so that if it has frozen up, it'll melt.
Right.
And, and then turn it back on, you know? So that's just common practice in our household, so. But, anyway, okay. Let's move on to general fund. So then my only, my only thing on this is if we think the same amount of hours or time or whatever, if we're dividing it between all of that and her wages went up, your wages went up, wouldn't this need to go up a little too? Okay, good. So we'll find that out with the next meeting then, what the total comes to there.
And this triple B is economic development.
Yes, it is. Bed, board and booze tax. The other, the newsletter, the training, Hermosa connects. Yeah, we'll see how that rolls out. I, I'm okay with leaving it at that rate at the moment or lowering it or I don't know, as far as economic development goes, I don't have a clue what the Hermosa connects has in store for the next year and I don't know that it, you know.
They're all nonprofit though, right?
Yeah, but we, we have given them funds out of the B and B, um, to do, uh, well, I think it was like their meet and greet that they had and, okay. So we'll just leave that as it is. FEMA. Well, I think we're, we'll leave that there. Don't know any better than that. Debt service. Holy bucket.
So this is the TIF. Three oh one fund is a TIF fund and I wasn't sure what to do with this, so I haven't. I mean, we are still getting taxes.
We are, but, but.
But they can only be used for.
That TIF. And so it kinda sounds like at this point, that TIF needs to be closed out and the new one totally started over. Um, Kent thinks that we can do an overlay and keep this one and we, we just have to find out for sure. Um, and so that's TIF funds, it's not budget funds at all, so it kind of, it kind of zeros out anyway. But that is something that we, we have to find out and we need to, um, get moving on because if the new projects are gonna create a new TIF and they, it has to be a new TIF, we have to get the other one shut down. So. Okay, so that brings us to the water. Water wage expense. So that's Chuck. And a portion of billing and all that, right?
Well, that's, that is your reading of the meters.
Okay, so then that brings me to, do we have enough money? Did you put in any expense for the new automatic reading system?
Um, well, that's down there. Um, well, that's down there under equipment expenses.
Which is the highlighted yellow.
The thirty-eight, which I. When I was playing around with those, increasing the fees, I dropped that, so. Cause it was more. Just to make it come out, so.
So you dropped that? It's more, it costs more than that?
Well, I think we had budgeted more.
I can't remember what the last.
The last year's budget was seventy-seven thousand, so. So you had budgeted for this year.
So then you need to find the last records minutes to find out exactly how much that system will cost.
Okay.
I think it was like sixty-six.
Was it?
That's what I remember.
And.
We don't have to do it in twenty-twenty-five though, do we?
We don't have to do it anytime, but it, it, Jill wants it so bad. And Chuck wants it so bad, and. I'm not opposed to having it either, um, I know, I still don't mind the job most of the time, I don't mind it at all. But, you know, when it's.
Well, she rides in the car, Ron does the walking, you know.
Not all the time.
It's good for him, like, gets out, gets some exercise.
Yeah, exactly.
Money on the side.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, uh, all I'm thinking is, I mean, once. Once we get our water projects underway, we get some stuff, with some development going, that's not even gonna be that big a deal, I don't think. And, and then it'll, I mean, then it'll be basically necessary if we get a couple more neighborhoods. Up there and then down over here, I, I don't even know anything about this one over here yet, so.
Well, and then my issue is, and this is gonna take, I'm sure. A system or some sort of a system, if we're only, if we're only supplying the sewer. That's gonna be a whole new thing there.
Yeah.
And so that's gonna take computer software, I'm sure to, to do that, I, I don't know, I. Check into what the total was on that, and we're gonna put a big question mark in there.
And that's only, that's only for the equipment price, that doesn't include installation either.
Correct, correct, and I've heard two totally different separate stories on how much that'll cost for installation and time wise.
Well, in the paper industry, you basically double the equipment cost to figure labor, but that's in. Under one roof.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
It's not all spread out here, but of course, the work here is a lot easier than the work there. You know, you can do one, you can upfit one meter and. I mean, it depends on the meter, but some of the meters are just.
I know, I was told at one time that to, to do this system, they'd have to go into every home and change everything.
Yeah.
And then I was told opposite, that no, they can do it in the meter pit and it won't be that difficult, so.
My so-called meter pits underneath my house, so.
Uh-huh.
They would have to go into my house and, as Chuck says, drag the mud through the carpet and everything, but.
Right.
I would probably just do it myself and not have to worry about it.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So, so this is where the expense changes, is, is how many, what i- what is there, about half? Ask Chuck that, how, how many? Right now approximately, is it half are outside the house and half are inside the house, or? Three quarters and a quarter, or what, whatever that is, just to have some sort of an idea. Okay?
Oh, he's on the outside.
Ours is on the outside, mm-hmm. Most of my neighborhood is on the outside. Um, so.
So, do you ever see your neighbor across the alley? Is she living there?
The one in Sally's old house?
No, Debbie Anderson.
Well, that's a block down, I have no idea.
Right.
That's a block away, huh?
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're a block that way, she's a block this way.
Yep.
She never did have a water.
I mean, should we do the water meters with the SRF? So that's water? That's improved.
I think we've asked that before, and I don't think we can, but let's ask again. Um. And we're already above, um, with the estimates, we're already above the five hundred thousand on the AARP, right? Grant, I think the, the last numbers I seen, we were at five hundred and forty-two thousand for that project and the grant is for. Five hundred thousand.
Uh, I don't know, I gotta look at that.
So, look at that.
Well, there isn't nothing.
Is that on that one page sheet that he gave us?
I think so, yes, I, I know I seen it not, not so long ago, so, okay. Um. Front desk service charges.
That was from adding additional users. Part of where G works are from, when people make their payments.
So we have to have that. Principal.
So that's our rural development loan.
Mm-hmm.
One.
Interest.
Two and three.
Road development.
Reserves.
So we currently have three rural development loans that we're paying, so.
Interest prin- those won't change, those are what they are. Um, principal.
These were, and these were all, I think the rural development one is only water, but the two and three are split between water and sewer.
Reserves. None of this can really be changed, I don't think.
I think so, it's.
I think that's all a wash.
Should we increase the loan principal and loan interest to be the two point two? Since we're using the two point two in our other projections for this? Just to.
So I've got the one point. Yeah, and I've gotta look at that and. Water.
Okay, so you look at that, okay? So we're done with that page then, correct?
I, I hope we never have to even get close to that, but.
Yeah. Yeah, good point. Okay. This brings us to the last page. Um, and that brings us to sewer.
There's nothing there. Do we still have a sewer system?
I think so.
Go flush the toilet air quick, make sure it's sewers. Guess that would just be water then.
No, it might be water to begin with, but it's gonna be sewer eventually.
That's, that'll only test the water again.
Wage expense, so that's. That'll have to change just a little bit, mm-hmm. And the payroll and all that then will change, professional fees.
That's Chuck's contract.
Okay, repairs and maintenance. Wow. But there again. Yeah, you reduced that.
Because, cause we had pace come through this year with camera jetting, so I wouldn't think we'd need that next year.
Well, geez, we budgeted seventy-three thousand for twenty-three and we only used.
That's because they didn't come jet.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And, and they, they don't have to jet every year. And so, um, and that would be the.
So that's, that's kinda why I reduced that from the fifty-one five to the thirty-five, cause.
Yeah, we shouldn't have to do much more of that for the rest of the year, right?
Yeah.
I mean, we paid them almost, it was like twenty-eight thousand, I think.
Yeah.
So.
So I think that, I think that's a good projection there. Supplies and materials, okay. Chemicals, I would expect the chemical one to go up, however.
For the treatment plant.
I don't know why we only spent twenty dollars.
Yeah, interesting.
And really, those, those chemicals aren't gonna be used.
As much.
They're only, they're only to be used when we do land applied right now. From the third cell.
So maybe that will go down.
We won't.
How bad?
As far as I know, we're not, we're not gonna be using that same chemical. In the treatment system, I don't, there's probably gonna be other chemicals. You know, like, uh, I don't even know if they're technically chemicals, but things to. Encourage the growth of the biofilm and then also encouraging growth in the ponds themselves and things, but.
So here again, you could call Anthony and ask about that. And see what the differences are there. And so that brings me to the fact that this is gonna get up and running by this year. What other expenses, the power expense is gonna go way up. So.
Well, just.
Utilities expense will go way up, it's at four thousand right now, I'm afraid that is gonna go up.
That plant?
Mm-hmm.
Did he give you the, use the power specs on it?
I don't think we've got those yet.
So you could ask Anthony about that, boy girl, you're gonna be on the phone for days here, I'm sorry.
Well, some of this stuff, he can call me since I'm supposed to be the chairman of the sewer committee.
Okay, okay.
Can do that.
Other expenses. Repairs at the lagoon pumping. So that had to have had the trucking in it, that cost had to have had the trucking in it. And so we're not gonna have that, but we will still have repairs probably, different things. Possibly.
I hope we don't have repairs.
I hope we don't have very many.
I was gonna say.
Brand new.
Couldn't have any for a while.
Mm-hmm.
And mean, and really, what, what kind of repairs would, do we need to do?
Yeah, I know, and then everything's gonna be on the loan. You know, but all, so maybe we can actually lower that one.
Yeah.
Which one are you thinking of?
Um, I'm down to other expense.
I mean, in theory, we will never have to pump that thing again. And basically, I think that was the main reason for that line.
Yeah. So let's look at that, what, what do you think, lowering that to?
I don't know, I mean. If everything works and that's only to pump, then we shouldn't have to have that at all. But, you know, without knowing what else we may need to do there.
Mm-hmm.
But that's just, yeah, but of course, we have a. The repairs and maintenance, that should cover the, the lagoon area as well as the rest of the infrastructure, right?
Yeah, it should.
So that's why I'm wondering if this line item, and then if you look at the costs. There, you know, those are like the pumping costs there. So to me, it's like, uh, you know, going forward, we're not gonna need that at all. I'm, I'm a little bit leery about lowering it to zero.
I know, I am too.
Thousand, but.
So should we lower it to twenty-five hundred?
Yeah, I suppose.
Other expenses?
Yeah.
I mean, that's gonna give us a.
Just something to have there, and seventy-five hundred to put back into the utilities and.
Right.
And that, okay. Alright, capital improvements.
Yeah, I could see that plant costing eight grand.
Huh?
That plant probably cost eight grand or a hundred, I could see that.
Yeah, well, they did have a cost estimate of operations on the, um, thing, but I think that was. For the whole system too, not just the plant.
Okay. Oh, equipment, all that should be in the loan, that should not, that should even out. Operating, principal, all this we can't change, they are what they are. Interest, principal. New loan, Apple Springs principal thing, so.
And that's based on just the bank loan for the full price, because in talking to Toby Morris, he thought we could get a better rate. With the bank than that six point two five that, um, they were gonna offer us for three years and then be able to maintain it.
Really, he thinks we can do better than that?
He thinks we can get, he actually told me he thought we could get four point eight five. So.
Nice.
Can we find out, like?
Yeah, I have a call into him and he's supposed to be calling me back, cause he was gonna talk, he was gonna talk to. Um, his people, they.
Yeah.
Awesome, okay.
If we could get that figured out by Friday, then we can have our whole meeting on that topic for Tuesday.
Correct.
Figured out, and we'll get put to bed Tuesday.
So I'll check with Toby tomorrow.
Okay.
And see what he found out.
Cool, thank you for doing that. Okay, um, reserves. Reserves, land, land, sewer, nope. We've got that, okay, so we're done with that one, right, until we have more information.
Yep.
Okay, so the, the bottom is the totals, and so we can't do any of those until.
Get the totals, adjustments we've made.
Yep, yep, so. I, I think we're good. And now, so the next meeting is scheduled for Thursday night. That gives you two days, if that's not enough for you to get this work done.
I can, I can do the calls to Anthony.
Okay.
If you want to plan those to me.
Yep, that'd be great.
If, if you can, would it be too much trouble to have you email a list of the topics? And make sure, or we can, or we can just do that now. So, the things I have, you wanna start at the beginning? Um, or do you wanna read off what you have?
Are you talking questions for Anthony?
Yeah.
Okay, so I have. Good, so the first question I have is, can any of his fees be taken out of our equipment?
Okay.
And the next one is, um, can we use the SRF funds for the new water meters?
Cold certain.
I'm cold too. With you, I'm glad I don't have a tank done on, like I normally do.
I just say. Check with him on the chemical expenses for the lagoon, if we're gonna need.
That was just a really nice fall day today.
And also the powers and everything, the cost of electrical for that, for the lagoon. And if there would be any pumping costs. Thank you for doing that, though.
Yeah.
Then I'll just, then I'll call Kent and check, have a few questions for him, so.
So this is Kel, give that back to him in case he needs it, I didn't end up using it anyway, so that was good. So, um.
It's so Thursday night, slight.
Biffy? I think we can make it work, if he's gonna call them, I can.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we will, um, she'll, she'll have a better idea tomorrow, she'd have to post it for tomorrow. Tomorrow night at five, you'd have to post it, and if she doesn't think she can get through it, she can follow us. And I, I know Friday night's not a great night for meetings, especially this weekend, not for you at all. Or Friday day, Friday late afternoon.
I can't do it for you late afternoon.
You can't do it then? So then, so then the question is, if we don't have this done. Um, we really can't have Tuesday night's meeting. So then, we'll know that, we'll postpone Tuesday night's meeting till the following Tuesday night. And we'll have a budget meeting then next week. Everybody on board with that, they understand what I'm saying and all that, so. So we'll know this by, basically by tomorrow.
Yep.
Because for one thing, you're gonna be in overtime if you don't take Friday off.
Probably.
So, there's that too, and taking Friday off makes it impossible to do the meetings.
Agenda.
Uh, uh, yeah, to do, get the agenda done. So, that being said, tell me right now, what are you thinking? Cause we may, we should maybe change that meeting now and be done with it.
Mm-hmm, probably be the safe thing to do, just.
Mm-hmm.
Well, yeah, cause I mean, if you're, tomorrow's Wednesday.
Yeah, already.
Yeah.
I mean, I've got all the claims put in except for Chuck's, and so, and I've been working on the, the agenda, but. Yeah, I mean, I'm probably gonna have my hours in.
And would you rather have overtime, or would you rather have the time off?
Hmm, I don't really have any plans this weekend, so I. Few hours overtime, I mean, I could always leave early on Friday too, so. It's Jill's.
Really, it, it is.
Let's, let's see how tomorrow goes, can I?
Yeah, see how tomorrow goes.
By early afternoon, how about that, and then, and then we can, and then if I think we're gonna need extra time, I'll call you and we'll. Call you and we can change it at that time.
Okay, that okay, look, you guys, Kel, you're alright?
Yeah, I mean, I need to talk to Anthony to see if postponing that meeting until the following Tuesday. Is gonna hurt any timelines for anything.
Yeah, cause he's going to the county then the fall, and I think their meeting is that.
The following week, so it would be the night before, again, like we did just this last time, so.
Okay.
It shouldn't, it should not affect him, but yes, you need to ask him now.
You tell him we're gonna get out of here?
I know, but we got a couple things yet to do, so calm down, okay, so, um. The budget discussion is done for tonight, that brings us to, um. Items from citizens, Erin, anything?
I'm good.
I I, thank you for your presence tonight, that was, that was helpful.
Wait, he gave presents? I didn't give my presents.
Alright.
I'll be candy next time.
I'll bring sweet, something sweet, something sweet, something sweet.
Okay, trusty input. We've kinda inputted on what we think the meetings, what we'll wait for for the meetings and we'll, we'll get that information tomorrow. I wanna thank everybody for being here, I think that we went through it, I was a little worried when we've taken this first page.
Yeah, well, yeah.
But uh we got through it. Oh, very informative, and thank you, Terry, for that, I thought that was very good.
Yeah, that was very informative.
He just knows it inside and out and he just can explain it.
Well, when you talk about ten percent, you know, when you think, how much is that gonna raise? I mean, you know, because there are a lot of older people in town.
Exactly.
There are a big think of, you know, and I, that's why I thought.
I'm gonna be one of those older persons pretty shortly.
I am one of those older people.
Okay, uh, thank you, everybody, for coming and for your time and patience and and I I really appreciate the work that we are doing.
It's foggy.
Yeah, uh-oh, so then that brings us, anybody else have any trusty input? Okay, so that brings us to executive session and we do need one, correct? And so I need a motion to go into executive session at eight thirty four.
So moved.
Do I have to second that?
I guess I'll second it.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks Donna.
Is it gonna be a short executive session?
It's already bumped to.
Well, we, right now, we're looking at Thursday night.
Oh, it's still pending.
It's still pending, um.
I'll bother Terry Thursday more.
That'll, that'll work, very good, thank you, alright, first and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
I make a motion, we can have the executive session at eight forty three.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, very good, it is eight forty three, we're out of executive session, no motions. Um, will be made from executive session, um, we're we're moving forward as fast as possible.
Did the recorder get turned back over then?
And, um, we will, I will take time for adjournment at eight forty four.
I make a motion, we adjourn this meeting at eight forty four.
Donna's made the motion, Kel, do you second that motion?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried, thank you, board, thank you, Terry, very.